All right, I'm going to call to order the Tuesday, October 24th, 2023 meeting of the Planning Commission. If you can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, in the visual with liberty and justice for all.
Kristin, can you call the roll?
Yes. Commissioner Bardis?
Here.
Commissioner Dolan indicated she would be absent this evening. Commissioner Stapp?
Here.
Commissioner Hamame?
Here.
Commissioner Arnsman?
Here.
Commissioner Woods?
Here.
And Chair Kempner?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Would anybody like to make a motion to excuse Commissioner Dolan?
So moved.
Before.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? She's excused. Approval of the agenda. Does anybody have a motion or changes?
Motion to approve the agenda for October 24th.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. The minutes of September 26th, 2023. Does anybody have any changes?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes from September 26th.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Uh, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting minutes are approved. Communications. I see that we have a stack of emails. Do we have any other communications?
Those are all related to the PUD. There are no other communications this evening.
Thank you. Citizen comments. This is the time for items that are not on the agenda. You will have time to address agenda items during the meeting. For any comments, we ask that you come to the podium, state your name and city of residence, and limit your comments to three minutes. The Planning Commission will not engage you in conversation, but will be noting your comments and will try to address them during discussions. Do we have any comments for items not on the agenda? Okay, we'll move to old business. Plan unit development, PUD 0123, the Columbia. Kristin, would you like to give an intro?
So if you'll all recall, or at least most of you, the public hearing was held for this at our previous September meeting, and it was also introduced at that time. There are a number of questions that were, went back and forth, but there were no substantial changes to the plan as part of this most recent packet. And you'll notice there's things that are bubbled in red. Those are some things that are made for clarifying features only. The plan has stayed essentially the same. As we discussed, there is some additional public comment that was received, and that's provided to you in print, and you were also sent most of those via email as well. I just want to touch on a few things for the PUD. A reminder that three of the seven benefits that are outlined in Section 138, 533 of the zoning ordinance and in the Carlisle-Wartman letter have to be met, or that the Planning Commission has to find are met in order for you to recommend approval. And there's a thorough analysis of those in that Carlisle-Wartman review letter. Procedure-wise, we've already held the public hearing. The Planning Commission's next step would be to make a recommendation for approval or denial to council, and then following that, the council would take action on the PUD agreement, including the deviations. You also have the option to postpone, as you would have with any particular item. There's a couple deviations that I wanted to point out. Specifically, the applicant is asking for a deviation for the setback along Coolidge, for the parking, and then lastly, for the use. There are a couple references in the PUD materials to a retail building that would go in the south parking area. That would not be planned at this point, as I understand it in the application materials, until land becomes available to the south of this entire development and additional parking could be constructed. So I think it's shown right now as a future potential option, but you may ask the applicant to clarify that. There's a couple other additional items I wanted to point out that were items of question in the Carlisle-Wartman review. One of them was the minimum distance to the adjacent single-family homes on the subject property, and at the closest point to those homes, that's indicated as 31 feet. It does meet the required setback of 15 feet along...
31.
Yes, along that entire property line. Projections have been indicated, and setbacks for those projections have been indicated on the plans as well. Those are bubbled in red. The barrier-free parking that was previously left off of some sheets has been added to every sheet, so that that's consistent. And then also, the waste receptacles that were asked to be shown on Coolidge have been highlighted as well. So all of the items that were noted in the Carlisle-Wartman review that the Planning Commission had to address before the planning, that the applicant had to address before the Planning Commission could take action have been addressed. I just wanted to clarify that. The only other thing that I wanted to note is if the retail were to move forward, it would have to be an amendment of the PUD, or there would have to be provisions included in the PUD to account for that. So right now, that is not part of the plan. I have Michelle Maron here from Carlisle-Wartman, who did the review. If you have any additional questions or need some additional information as well.
Thank you. All right, so for those of you that are here, this is how I'm going to let, this is how I'm going to run it. So we got our staff intro. I am going to let the applicant do their presentation, then we are going to ask questions, then I'm going to open it up for citizen comments, and then we'll come back, we'll ask some more questions, and then we'll deliberate. So with that, I will turn it over to the applicant, who I believe has a presentation for us.
Thank you. Should I control the clicker? Do you have a clicker?
I don't have a clicker. I will be your clicker.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you very much for hearing us tonight. Appreciate your time and all of your service to the City of Berkeley, so thank you very kindly. My name is Wayne Wadika. I represent WJ Ventures LLC, the applicant for the PUD before you this evening. I'm a Birmingham resident, and I've been doing business in the Berkeley Huntington Woods Oak Park area for 32 years now. Our team is made up of longtime local residents, business owners, entrepreneurs, who've literally and figuratively been investing in the community for over 30 years. To give you a little bit of background on us and our operations, we own and operate Huntington Cleaners at 11 and Coolidge since 1992. Our international headquarters are located at 2060 Coolidge Highway, directly next to the proposed development. We recently bought Camelot Cleaners and the real estate in April of this year, and we have commercial property on 12 miles. So we're pretty well invested in the area, as well as office building across the street from this proposed project, which was formerly the Losalet Credit Union facility that wraps around the small apartment building on, behind us. In the past, I've served on a number of Berkeley boards, former president of Chamber of Commerce, sat on the DDA board for four years, and have been pretty active in most requests that come in to us to get involved in the community events, whether it's sponsorship, K-9, et cetera. We've had a pretty active involvement here in Berkeley, and appreciate the city's position where we are today and the forward vision you have in the master plan. All that to say that, I'd like to, if you could click, please, with me this evening, all that to say, I really think we have a shared vision with the city. I don't think this is the right, you click one more, there you go. All that to say, I believe that our investments and our time spent and our work here is consistent with a shared vision that Berkeley has and has demonstrated in your actions as Planning Commission, as council, and in the new master plan. I think we share your vision in sustainable, thoughtful development in the area. And frankly, this development has a pretty big impact on properties we own directly to the west, north, and south of the project. So we hold two properties almost directly adjacent to this, cross both streets. We've assembled a pretty good team. If you could click one more. Our development team, I'm the lead developer, as I said, Peter Stuhlreier is here, he's with Design House Architects. He'll be addressing you this evening, as well as Joe Anderson, lead planning engineer for Giffords Webster on the project. And then we had two interns working with us this summer that have been involved in this project. They're back at college now, but my son, Wayne Wadika, and Elliot Nederhut did a lot of preliminary work with the city, sat at a lot of meetings, and did a market analysis for us with regard to this project. All right, why now? Like many communities nationwide, there's a demand for housing. There's a demand for rental properties, and it's incredibly high, we believe, in the Berkeley area, particularly evidenced by the quick fill-up of the Ivy across the street, which leased up in under 120 days, and has new construction going on behind it. At present, 73% of the housing, the land use in Berkeley is occupied by single-family housing, and only 1% of the land use is multifamily, whether it's two units up to 10. So it's a disproportionate amount of multifamily, or under, a very small percentage, obviously, of multifamily in the area, given the land use that's currently here. The master plan, which was adopted in 2021, which we fully support, clearly addresses the need for alternative housing in the area to help support the city's vision and future success. The master plan vision really calls for future land use that creates a vibrant business community, preservation of the neighborhoods, and fosters the city's values. It calls for differing types of uses, as I said, to just simply single-family homes. Our property sits right in the middle of the Gateway District, which is really, just recently named the Gateway District, and the Gateway District calls for housing and calls for a more vibrant business community to support the businesses on that portion of Coolidge. We know that we have a very high quality design. We have a beautiful project that's going to be built with, as you'll see as we get into the renderings and talk further about that today. And what's interesting in Berkeley, you're calling, the city's calling for more development, more housing, and of the 1,656 acres that Berkeley comprises, only, there's only 6.6 acres available for, free acres available for development today. So with that in mind, it creates quite a conflict with the plan, because what was required then is someone has to assemble disproportionate pieces of property together to create a big enough piece to create a development that's not only buildable, affordable, profitable, and sustainable. We've done exactly that with our project. We've assembled these parcels since 2006, since we started construction on our office building next door, and have assembled a project now that, if you go to the next slide, would provide us the ability to build this project. The engagement in the community, throughout the process, we've stayed very active, and before we even came to planning, started talking to various officials in the city about the plan for this area. Would housing be something that's welcome? Then we received very good feedback that it would be. So throughout our planning process, we have been, we've continued to speak and reach out to the residents. We've made a priority before talking to anyone else, about talking to the neighbors. I personally hand-delivered letters up and down the street. I met with individual and groups of neighbors, not everybody favorable, be honest with you, but some very favorable. In fact, two of the three residents directly to the east of our project are in favor of the project, and one spoke, came out and spoke in favor of it at the September meeting. Our team is really trying to coordinate the future vision for the city, with taking into account the needs of the neighbors, taking into account our adjacent properties, and the future of where Berkeley is headed. One more. Can you back up? There's a, there should be a rendering of the whole site, the building, back. There it is. So that would be the project. So we've assembled enough property to build just that. It does span over Columbia. It's total of 57 units, and it meets all the requirements. It is, the height requirements are met, the zoning is correct. We have some underlying zoning requirements that we're here for with regard to the PUD this evening. We feel that the reason we even need a PUD, frankly, is the zoning changes haven't caught up with the new Gateway District. And we've been, as we've talked to people, the things we're asking for are really not out of line. They're not really looking for a big departure from where the city's going to be, frankly. Most, if not all of the changes, the PUD requirements that we're looking to have consideration on will probably be in effect before we even break ground. That of the parking requirement, the retail on the first floor, et cetera. So we feel like our project, while being developed a little bit ahead of time, fits exactly with where the city's going, and based on our research, we fit within the city's guidelines of a project of this nature in this area, on this land. So we're getting ahead of that finalization of the zoning, but we feel like we fit right in with the direction of the city where it's headed today. I'm also happy to report that everything's in place. The roads are there, the sewers are in place, the land balancing is there. There's not a tremendous amount of site work that has to happen. In fact, we'll be eliminating three curb cuts off of Coolidge that exist today, where vehicles enter in and back out onto Coolidge into our duplexes. Those three curb cuts are currently in that one and a half block stretch of property we're going to develop. They'll be gone, and they'll be replaced with more on-street parking. So effectively, you'll be left with the two roads that exist to enter in and out of our property. The parking is under the first floor, which we, again, we had to figure out a way to build a project of scale, given the hardship that exists on Coolidge for any development, whether it's this or any others, to accommodate parking. So we raised the building, effectively putting, 80% of our parking will be underneath the building. There'll be 16 spaces outside of the building perimeter, so people basically pull in, pull under the building, park, get on a stairway or an elevator, and head up to the second or third floor. The third floor will have residents going all the way across. The second floor will only have, will not cross over Columbia. That'll be about a 15-foot height there for vehicle traffic, DPW, and public safety wanted at least 14 feet six. We're at about 15 feet. And we are putting in our own stormwater retention, so we will actually eliminate stormwater runoff in the site, which is currently taxing the stormwater system. Joe will talk more about that in detail, the stormwater retention that's going on the site. There'll be no parking lot poles in the area. All the foot traffic, the footlight and candle will be on the back wall facing the building, and it really only has to shroud about 16 parking spots to the back of the property. We've put extensive landscaping in the plan. There currently is not much of a direction for landscaping for a project of this nature. In fact, there's really nothing specific. We're close to 400 plantings going in the property, and a small green area in the back for the residents of the building to gather in on the east, the southeast corner between one of the residents in our building. So there'll be somewhat a small park there. And then we've offered landscaping credits to the immediate neighbors adjacent to our project to put greenery, evergreens on their project, like we did along the back of our office building, which shields really the neighbors from our building completely, once those trees have gotten matured. So we've taken everything into account that we can. We've come in with, I think, a very good plan, and we're excited to give you more detail about it this evening. But first and foremost, what's important to us, whether we build, whether we're going to permission to build or not, on our property is our reputation in the community, and I think, and hopefully you appreciate the way we've engaged the community and gone about seeking input from not only the residents, we presented to the Downtown Development Authority Board. You have a letter in support from them. We had unanimous support from the DDA. We presented to the Chamber of Commerce, got similar comments from them, although not everyone there was in favor, but we had great dialogue. We took away some good things that we learned from that meeting. And as you can imagine, when you get a project of this nature, it's going to create some anxiety and some public comment. And we wanted to take it upon ourselves today to launch a website to answer the questions we heard throughout this process. As we've talked to people, some of the same questions keep coming up, whether it's online or in person. So you can go online right now to thecolumbiaberkeley.com. It'll give you a background on us, it'll answer frequently asked questions, and also give you an opportunity, and the citizens of Berkeley, or anyone that's concerned, an opportunity to reach out to us and ask us questions directly through the Contact Us page. So that site is live. We thought it was a good idea to put out there, rather than going on the public forum and trying to debate things. We thought we'd create our own site, offer people an opportunity to thoughtfully ask questions and get answers from us. So with that, I'd like to ask Joe Anderson to come up. We're going to break this presentation up into three parts, and then we'll conclude. Joel handle a number of questions with regard to parking, storm, traffic, and design on the building. So thank you for your time. I'll talk to you in a few minutes.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Joe Anderson with Giffords Webster Engineers. I'm a site civil design engineer with 25 years' experience with Giffords in site planning and site civil engineering. I guess if we can just kind of go. So a lot of these questions were coming up, and I can talk to these. We meet the parking, or we're coming very close to the parking, with a 1.49 parking spots per unit. That's been a discussion many times here, and I think we're coming to that. Numerous bike racks and EV charging stations. There's some tandem spaces. Those spaces will be handled by the property management to, you know, one unit can, if they have two cars, can have the two tandems, so it's not two different units kind of working each other out. So one of the bigger questions was visitor parking for overnight parking. Obviously, a lot of the residents on Columbia and Cambridge don't want overnight parking. The client has ownership of property just to the north, across the street, and just to the west, across the street. There are two businesses that would be available for overnight parking. Again, that could be handled by the property management that's there to coordinate and work that portion out. The other big concern was, will it create more traffic? We did a traffic report, and I have the preliminary responses that came back today, a memo from our traffic engineer, and kind of basically the highlights that this development will create less traffic than a project that could be built there code-compliant right now. No PUD would be required. You come in with a mixed-use building of retail, residential, and office space, with parking up front, buildings closer to the residents to the east, same height that is in the codes, and that would produce daily weekday trips of 670 trips per day, but our proposed is only 441 trips per day. So that's a reduction of 229 trips per day of traffic compared to what could be built right now code-compliant. That's kind of the biggest issue that we wanted to make sure. This report will be submitted once it's finalized, hopefully within the next week. So that was kind of the traffic. The impact to city services. Right now, we've worked with the engineering consultant for the city. They reviewed the plan. They've recommended it based on what we've done. The biggest thing that we're doing is a stormwater management plan. Right now, in Berkeley, there really are no codified engineering standards for stormwater management. It's basically follow the Oakland County requirements. However, the Oakland County requirements state any site less than one acre doesn't need to do anything. But we're taking that on and actually doing the stormwater management, putting in a very extensive detention system and a stormwater quality unit. So when the rain comes, everything on site will be stored on site, cleaned, and let into the current stormwater sewer at a much reduced rate over a period of 48 hours, basically. So it's not flooding the streets, it's not taxing the current system. We're really improving that, so in a heavy rain, all the other residents in the area, if, you know, we're reducing that whole line down Columbia. So, I believe, is there anything, next slide? So you can see there, we're kind of, that's the whole underground storage system. It's all coming into there. We're cleaning it before it goes into the system in Columbia. And if we want, well, that's okay, I can, with the landscape, our company also does the landscaping, and as Wayne said, there's really no requirements for landscaping, but if you can see on the plan, we've done, I think, an extensive job of creating plantings, even along the Coolidge frontage, with benches and more shrubs and trees and trash receptacles. And then along the backside, we're keeping things, and as Wayne said, we're also allowing a credit or working with the neighbors to help screen or come up with a landscape plan on their property to help screen as well. So I think we've done a pretty good job of answering a lot of the residential questions to minimize this site as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Peter from Design House.
Thanks, Jill. Good evening. My name's Peter Stuhlreier. I am the chief architect of Design House Architecture, 3300 Auburn Road, Auburn Hills, Michigan. Excited to present the project and answer any questions you might have. So the questions that have come up in the past, I'll just kind of high-level them. It is a 57-unit building. All those units are above the first floor, which is entirely parking. Those are studios, lofts, and one bedrooms throughout the building. Most of them have some sort of balcony, some of them even have a rooftop, small garden. So who are the, who are the potential tenants? We didn't target any tenants. This is a market rate project. This could be anyone, from singles, young professionals, retirees, empty nesters, you name it. We think we will attract all types. It is an elevator building. It has covered parking, so that's going to certainly make it accessible for all. The, yeah, the, it adds to the array of housing diversity in the area. We think that's a really important thing. And from an architecture standpoint, what our goal was from design was to, was to capture kind of the ethos of the area and really promote that, and not just take, and bring you a vanilla townhouse project that runs along the street that you could find in anywhere USA. This is really something that Berkeley could be all about, or that has historically been about, in its massing, in its shape, in its materials, in its colors. But it moves forward, and I think that's the theme of the presentation that we're looking at. So one of the really interesting things about it is that it crosses over with a bridge. Obviously, that bridge has been discussed at length to be, to be the right height for all vehicles, all traffic, all emergency vehicles, and it certainly will be. You know, we have, we have obviously introduced a project a long time ago with you, and had lots of input from community and others, stakeholders, and incorporated many things. I do have a list of things I didn't bring with me, but if we could, if it gets to that point, we can go over how your input has affected this design. It is a three-and-a-half-story building. It is only 40 feet to the very peak of the pitched roof. The flat roof is only 30 feet. The parapet is about four foot, so we're calling it 34. So we're calling it 34-4 from perception along Coolidge Avenue. When you look up at it, it's a 34-foot-tall building, basically. What you won't be able to see from the street or from the right-of-way are any mechanical units or any mechanical devices at all. They'll all be roof-mounted and hidden by the parapets around the outside. You also won't be able to perceive the roof gardens. So the people that have the lofts that go up onto the roof, they're set back away from the edge of the roof so that when you're along Coolidge, there's not that kind of perception of activity on the roof. It'll be hidden from the public right-of-way. On the back of the building, and I call it the back of the building, on the east side of the building facing the neighborhood, there are no balconies that are occupiable along the neighborhood. Those units are two-floor units, and they go up and have their rooftop balcony instead for that amenity. The back east side does have a further setback from the residential than is required, especially on the north end. It's a full parking lot away from the property line and then the property line to the next house. So I think the 31 feet probably is only qualified on the south end of the property. As you, if you look at the site plan, you can see the building shifts at the south towards the rear so that we could, so we could have a larger front setback and a less monotonous front end, a little bit more articulation along the facade with the fenstration and the setback. So that was, so the dumpster is on the north end of the building. That's fully enclosed. It's also underneath part of the building, accessible by chutes from inside of the second and third floor for both recycling and trash. There was some discussion of retail in the future. We're designing it with the ability of the south first floor to be converted into commercial use. Whether that happens is really not something we can read the future about, but it is set up that way. Not to get too far into detail, but the entrance, there's an entrance on the backside in the pocket park that would lead to future parking on the south and allow that to become kind of an activated little retail or office component on the project. I think these points have already been covered, but I do think that the reduction of the curb cuts on Coolidge is a pretty big deal. The access points that we kind of articulate on the north and south ends, along with the one-way traffic, really calms the conflicts that could happen, not only between people and cars, but between the intersection of Coolidge and Columbia. Now, we provide a couple of these illustrations that show that when you're in the bridge, under the bridge, there's openings, fenstration, windows, so that people can perceive the movement of cars within the parking areas, whether they're coming out or going in, as well cars can see people. Again, to reduce conflicts, you can see it's on both sides. So we shouldn't have a problem with that. The north end, similar. There's plenty of room for a vehicle to approach the sidewalk area, understand what's happening in terms of pedestrian flow, and then travel out onto the street. I think I covered this one, but the third floor doesn't have walkout balconies. We're trying to, we're trying to be good neighbors, not have that kind of feeling of imposing over top of the neighborhood. There are large windows, but within all multifamily, they're all usually covered with some type of window treatment that's either transparent or louvered. The masonry wall was discussed, I think, in the last meeting, that the screen wall that faces the neighbors is the same brick as the building. It's not a vinyl fence. We think the building creates a better buffer than is there right now for the neighborhood in terms of traffic noise and light pollution from Coolidge. The building lights, again, to cover this and not to be overly redundant, but the building lights are all shielded and screened. There's no off-property light pollution bleed. I think we're down to half a foot candle or something on our property lines. So no one in the neighborhood should be able to see a light source, and no one in the neighborhood as well will be able to see air conditioning compressor units because they're all on the roof and they're all on the Coolidge side. So the noise from those, if any, is also screened from the neighbors. So I'll bring Wayne back up for a summary.
Thank you.
Thank you. If I could advance one slide. So I think we've covered a lot for you this evening. It's our third time here, so some of you have seen this more than once. I apologize for the redundancy, but we believe we've hit a high-quality living facility here. We know that it supports the master plan that Berkeley's enacted. We've gotten good feedback from the community that we believe has helped improve our vision for the project and has made some good changes that we fully agree to. We think it's the right place, the right location, and the right time to build the project. And our quick look, our study on the PUD is we think we exceed well over three of the requirements, and probably six out of seven are favorable toward an approval. So we appreciate your consideration this evening, and we'll open it up for questions, and we're here until you want us to move along.
Thank you.
So thank you for your time.
All right. Does anybody, he says, brimming with questions.
First of all, I apologize. I wasn't here at the last meeting. I had recently had surgery, and I was still recovering. I did go through all the meeting minutes, and I read all of the comments, and I was here the first time for the plan review. So I am very familiar. I studied everything. I even, I called and asked some questions I had. I'm going to tell you very upfront, my biggest issues are, number one, the zoning district. I mean, this is in the gateway district, and the gateway district requires retail. It even, the master plan even requires some sort of retail because it wants it to be more user-friendly, walker-friendly, right? That's the intent of the district. That's my number-one issue. My number-two issue, obviously, is parking, which we spent some time on. I'm still very concerned about visitors. Specifically, I'm concerned about your control. You talk about parking areas that you have across the street. I presume you mean across Coolidge, which could get very busy and difficult to go across.
In Cambridge.
There's, you have parking across the street from Cambridge?
Yes.
Okay. But I guess the concern I have there is, who's to say people are going to do that? Because it's much more convenient to park on the side streets. And then also, I have a concern with the city benefit. This is a PUD, and that's the most important critical element, is that there be a benefit to the city to grant a PUD, and I have concerns with that. And I know you indicated that you feel you met at least six of the seven standards. Honestly, I don't, I'm trying to find three. And so I've come into this meeting having read everything, having prepared, and I'm still struggling with this one. For those reasons, I have a whole bunch of more detailed questions, but that was my, that's my initial reaction to this. So I don't know, if somebody else wants to share their thoughts or how you want to?
Well, do we want to ask some clarifying questions? I want to make sure that the residents get to have their chance to come in and let us know their thoughts before we get deep into deliberating about stuff, because that could take a bit.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize we were doing a...
Should I address, should I address the...
It's not a public hearing, per se. I just censor here.
Should I address her point so that it's not asked again?
You're welcome to, yes.
So with regard to retail, so I'm understanding that the retail requirement, while it's there currently, probably won't be when you go through your rezoning reviews. Secondly, there's a lot of retail in the area that's currently vacant. Third, there's a tremendous amount of retail built in the Beaumont project down the street that still sits vacant. If we were to build retail here, it actually would have a detriment, and we could today. As Joe indicated, we could put retail here today with housing and have 50% more traffic coming to the area, which I don't think is a good benefit. So retail in the area also would require more parking. Sites along Coolidge, if that's going to be, if you're going to hold fast to that, you'll never get a development here. They're only 100-foot-deep lots. So the hardship is not an economic hardship. It's a physical structure, city layout hardship. So you can't go, you have to go wide. So in order to go wide, you have to assemble property like we've done over the, over a number of years, like we did on our office building immediately to the north. We centered our building in the middle, built parking to both sides because you only have 95 to 100 feet of depth. When you put a retail building up, you're not going to be able to get a retail building up on that side of Coolidge that allows for enough parking in the front, and you'd have to shove the building to 10, within 10 feet of the back parking, back property line, which will then be right up against the back of, 10 feet off the property line. We're 30 feet off the property line with a landscape buffer. So we don't think retail fits there. We have retail in the area. We own two retail facilities. I would not build retail on that side of Coolidge, this project. We just basically sit with the duplexes that are eight-years-old sitting there today. So retail is really a nonstarter for any developer in the area because of the physical size, demand in the area is not high for retail, especially new construction cost. On the parking, the parking requirements are dated. Two cars per unit is a dated requirement. It's inconsistent with any of the other communities in the area. And again, we've been informed that you're going to go through a parking review and analysis that'll probably get us down, the requirement down to about one and a quarter per unit. We're currently proposing 1.49 in here. So we don't think we're, should even be concerned about visitor overnight guests. We think we have enough parking to accommodate a modern development today of this scale. So again, the PUD benefits, I think they're, I think the purpose of a PUD is to create a public benefit. Your master plan calls for more alternative types of housing. We think that stands alone as a strong benefit on its own, not to mention the economic impact in the area to the other businesses that are very favorable to this project. So I hope those at least address your questions from our perspective, and thank you for your comments.
I do have one question. On one of those, one of the pages of the slide, I think it was page 11 of some sort, I thought I read that it said parking is not assigned.
We won't have to park. Well, if it's, if you have two cars, we'll use a tandem, the tandem lot, the tandem parking in the building. So those will be assigned. The rest would be open to the residents on a first-come, first-served basis. But again, we'll have 80 spaces for 57 units. If you think about the tandem parking, it's no different than what you approved on the Phillips Row project on 12 Mile. You granted a parking space allotment inside the building and one directly behind it, as if it's a driveway in a home. We're treating that, those tandem spots in our building the exact same way you've approved on Phillips Row, and frankly, every house in the neighborhood that has more than one car parks behind their garage. So there's typically one or two cars in a driveway. So we're treating part of the covered parking in that fashion. So those would be assigned.
Does anybody have any other questions before I...
Just real quick, the tandem parking, is that on the north part of the property?
The tandem parking is on the south, on the south part of the property.
Okay. And then I just had a question about the overhang or the bridge, the residential bridge there. Obviously, it's taking up a public right-of-way, but my main concern is, I guess, how will maintenance be addressed on something like this? Because I feel like there's a lot of variables involved in this type of structure with regards to, you know, possibilities of it getting damaged. If it gets damaged, what's the domino effect of, you know, possibly having to close the road to address the damage? You know, just over time, grit and grind getting on there and just affecting the overall aesthetics of the area. So I was wondering if there's a plan associated with, I guess, addressing that first of all, but I guess it would apply for the entire development. I'm hoping it would anyways.
Sure. So great question. The height is actually, exceeds most overpasses on highways. Department of Public Safety recommended 14.6. We're at 15 feet minimum clearance, so any emergency vehicle, fire truck can get under there with no issue or semi. So we don't see that as an issue. There are other bridges in other communities just like this with lower overhangs. If you look at the 555 Building in Birmingham, which is right off of Woodward in downtown Birmingham, is 14 feet 6 inches. There's no issue there. It'll be masonry construction supporting it, so you're not going to see any real damage unless a bomb lands on the building. That's not, any other building in the community isn't susceptible to. It's a brick veneer building, so maintenance is pretty minimal. It's not as if we'll have to paint it every couple of years because of peeling paint. We're building a permanent gorgeous structure here, and the maintenance, we're going to have to maintain the building. You have 57 residents in there that'll require property management to be of a high caliber and standard, like the rest of our properties in the area. So when you build a project like this, you build in maintenance, standard, you know, care for the property on an ongoing basis. So I appreciate those questions, but it's, I think it's just built into the project that there won't be those type of concerns. And public safety, again, approved and sort of public works is fine with this, not only the height, but the setbacks and the pedestrian walkway. We'll be lighting it underneath, and it will be sprinkled in the event that a vehicle or something has a fire underneath the building. We've taken all that into account through, again, through public comment. This will be the first bridge in Berkeley, so we're not used to seeing them, but there are other communities, you go to Novi, Plymouth, Birmingham, you see projects like this.
Can I just ask one more clarification question? So I want to be clear, looking at one of the plans in here, and it lays out parking requirements for retail slash office, and it calculates it for Building A and Building B. But from what I hear from you today, it's a nonstarter. There's no retail, and you're not planning it at all.
This project calls for 57 apartments. If we were to acquire the property to the south someday...
So is that what Plan A51 is talking about? That's what I'm just trying to...
I'm not sure what... That was a compliance plan from some time ago. Showing what could be built on the site. So what we wanted to show you, Mr. Mahoney, was we want to show you what could be built there. Joe alluded to the fact that we could build something without PUD, without a zoning requirement. So we could build retail there right now, and I don't think the city would like it based on what's allowable in the district. We were trying to demonstrate to you that if we just decided to build today, we could pull a permit, and it would be a far less desirable property than what we're proposing.
Okay.
Okay, I hope that clears that up.
So it's, no retail?
Not today. And not unless we require more property to the south. Home and Doors at the corner, they have the lot directly next to us. If they ever want to sell, we consider that. Then we could look at a conversion of part of our building, but again, we'd have to come back in for approval for that. But we're not asking for retail today, period, and a story.
And do you have a plan that shows the lots that you're going to share parking with? And will there be some sort of shared parking agreement?
There will not be a shared parking agreement because we don't think we need it given our parking. However, we do control those lots, and if it was to become an issue, we would address it. And we would have to address it, just as property managers. If there was an issue with the park, first of all, we didn't think there was enough parking. We wouldn't make this type of investment in the project to build something where people that live here couldn't park. So we think we're addressing that just based on what the requirements are in every other community around you and where we believe the zoning or the parking requirements are going in Berkeley. So we're a little ahead of our time on that, but we're probably a quarter car per unit over any other community's requirements for this type of project. So we will not do a shared parking on our other lots, but they're available. We own the properties. We're not going anywhere. We believe we've got enough on this site to accommodate our residents and their guests who they have them.
I don't know if you want, I was going to follow up with Kristen on some of that. Do you want me to wait?
No. If you've got a question, ask it.
Kristen, still talking about the couple of things that I started with, with my concerns, and they were addressed by the applicant. He indicated, as it relates to retail, that through the zoning ordinance amendment process that retail... that retail will not likely be required in that area. Is that something you could address for us?
Sure, the master plan calls for multiple family uses on all floors being added as a permitted use in this district when it is rezoned as part of our larger zoning ordinance rewrite. That's what I think he's referring to. But the, currently, the zoning ordinance does require retail.
Yeah, no, I understood that, but I was understa, I was trying to understand what he meant when he said that a future amendment wouldn't require retail there.
Right, so as part of the zoning ordinance rewrite, we're following the recommendations of the master plan. That's one of the recommendations of the master plan.
And then also, the parking study. The applicant indicated that the parking will get down to one and a quarter.
So that was kind of an opening discussion point for our zoning ordinance steering committee parking discussion. I don't know that it's going to get that low. I, I do feel fairly confident saying it's going to be not two spaces per unit, especially for units of this size. Past discussions of the committee have talked about potentially one point five spaces now is, is kind of where things seem to be landing, but it hasn't been a decided issue, and it would be up for public hearing as part of the zoning ordinance rewrite. But the overall feeling of the zoning ordinance steering committee is that two spaces per unit is too many.
Thank you.
And just to remind you, these are studios and one-bedrooms. You know, so there's no two, two, two-bedroom units proposed.
And this is a one point four-nine?
Correct.
Any other questions before?
Yeah, can I bring up one question regarding the bridge that was brought up? Is there any different liability that you guys have to carry for those folks that live above that? And, and like, I guess, is legal part of that essentially since there are people there? And if a dump truck drives through or a garbage truck or something with its, you know, tail up, which they do when they have bridges that are that low, that there's people there?
We are, we haven't been advised that we need, first of all, we talked to council about the bridge, it's perfectly legal, it's, happens all the time.
Definitely legal, yeah.
And we'll ensure, we'll ensure it properly, of course.
Okay.
To make certain of that. When you build a project like this, obviously, there'll be construction, there'll be insurance for construction, you know, development timeframes, builder's risk policies, and then we'll go into a permanent policy following that. We will have insurance in place before we break ground to be sure that we're covered for any future liability.
Okay.
So it'll be underwritten properly.
All right, I'm gonna open it up for citizen comments then, are we good? All right. We'll probably have more questions for you after.
We'll be here.
Okay, so citizens' comments, much like at the beginning, three minutes. Please sign in so, A, the minutes can properly reflect you. And in case you need correspondence from our community development director, state, when you come up to the podium, state your name, your city of residence. If you live very close to this, it's probably relevant information to give us. And citizen comments, anyone wanna come up and comment?
Hello, my name is Frank. I live at two-four-one-four Princeton Road. I want to thank everyone for letting me speak. Thank you for the presentation. It was much better than the first time, I appreciate that. A lot of the issues were, were spoken about. I don't have a nice presentation myself. Some of the, some of the concerns we have regards to safety, you actually covered quite well. So in lack, in lieu of a presentation, I'd like to show you the list of signatures from the petition that I have of everyone that is opposed to this.
Gotta get to the microphone though, so that if people are at home, they can hear you.
Okay. You have this in your packet, but here is a list of everyone that is opposed to this, this building, over five-hundred-and-sixty-five signatures on this. And that's it.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Patrice Von Liski, I live on Tyler Avenue. And I had a couple of questions for the gentleman on the prices of the apartments. For someone like me who's on a limited income.
You just have to address questions to us and we'll kind of note them.
I've never been to anything like this before. So I have two questions. So first of all, how much are the apartments? Are they considered affordable housing? For someone like me, I, I heard they'd be between eighteen-hundred and twenty-four-hundred. That would be totally out of my price range. I have social security, I have retirement from Novi Community Schools, and I teach guitar at Berkeley Parks and Recs. So if that is the case, eighteen-hundred to twenty-four, I would never be able to afford that. And the second thing is, is I noticed on the picture that I'm concerned about people getting rear-ended. I'm wondering if there's gonna be another stoplight. People come up from Oak Park heading south to north, and that comes up pretty quick after one of the lights. So I don't know if there'd be a caution light. I'm concerned about people being able to slow down, and I'm concerned about future accidents. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. And how much, what are the apartments? I didn't hear the answer to that.
We can, we'll ask him when we're done with citizen comments.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No one else is coming up, I guess, I don't know. Good evening, Steve Tomcoviac. I'm from the Fair Housing Center Metropolitan Detroit. I've got some brochures. If I could hand them out real quick. Just to give an idea of what we do. We've been in existence since nineteen seventy-seven. We work to ensure fair housing.
Everything you say away from the microphone, nobody at home can hear you.
Okay. We've been in existence since nineteen seventy-seven. We serve to assure fair housing in Wayne, Oakland, and McComb Counties, which is roughly forty percent of the state population. We have contracts with HUD, we have contracts with the state of Michigan through MISTDA. We have contracts through Wayne, Oakland, McComb Counties, and a host of municipalities. We serve everybody in the community. We don't serve tenants per se, we serve tenants, but we don't just serve tenants. A lot of training and education opportunities are for management companies, owners, property developments, attorneys, and so forth. We've done training in Detroit, Pontiac, Wayne County, Warren, Sterling Heights, Southfield, Oak Park Township, Dearborn, and hosts of other facilities as well. Those include planning departments, city attorneys, code officials, and so forth. So, but before I get into that, I want to say too, I live in North Oak Park. I consider Oak Park, Berkeley, Huntington Woods, because we're all within the same school district as one community. So I feel like this is home. I'm barely, just over a half-mile from here, five houses off Coolidge. I'll, for various reasons, I'll support this project. So we do a lot of education and training, we're happy to do so. We assist also with habitability, landlord-tenant disputes, we help to resolve housing issues before they become a major problem. We do quite a bit of training, also do course materials and training for HUD. I've done that since two thousand and four, except for a brief period where they've been break. I do that, it's based in Washington, DC. So here's the concern that I have. First off, the project is consistent with the master plan, there's a lack of affordable housing, period. That's just a crisis throughout all the communities. In a perfect world, there would be four, six, eight, ten-unit buildings interspersed throughout, not only this community, but all communities, and we'd meet the affordable housing crisis without really having big impacts on the communities. And that seems to be the real concern. Unfortunately, and here is where you have a situation where you get these large developments, well-presented, you know, and, and those are the ones that get through. It's not only here, it, it occurs elsewhere as well. And it's kind of sad that it comes down to this when there needs to be a real, take a step back, looking at zoning, what can be done to make sure that there's affordable housing within the community. But I'm here for fair housing, obviously. No one will ever say race outright, those kind of things. They'll say, we need to protect the character and value of our city, our neighborhoods, and our properties. A letters to the editor said, they put, I think it's the language here.
I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap it up because we're at three minutes.
But basically, it's going to be used for, we want to keep the community the way it is. The black population in Berkeley, I, the current data says three-point-two percent. It's low. Huntington Woods is working on what steps that they can do. Primarily homeownership, eighty percent owner occupied. I don't think approving this project would really change the character and nature of the community. It's just not, it's just not going to do it, hasn't done it elsewhere. I did a webinar just a few months back.
I'm gonna have to ask you to stop because we're already past the three-minute mark.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any more citizen comments? Going once, going twice? All right, I'm gonna close citizen comment, well, I guess I'm not closing it, but we're moving on from citizen comments. All right, so how much are the apartments? I don't know that anybody has an exact dollar figure right now, but they're going to be market rate. That was mentioned at the last meeting, and, and the market determines that. Now, every new apartment that comes will be more expensive because that's just the nature of it, but in the process, it makes the older apartments slightly more. The more influx of apartments we have brings those prices down. So it's not an immediate thing, but it ha, it has a purpose. I don't think there's any plans for any sort of a stoplight or anything else right there. And we saw the petition, we all also got the petition in our emails. And I think that was all the points, did I miss anything? Okay, no. All right, so our discussions. I don't know if we want to start talking about standards and then talk about specific site-plany kind of wise, or if we want to talk about site-plany-wise and then get, and that will lead us to the standards.
I actually had a few more questions, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, no.
I guess my first question would be for Megan or Michelle. Megan prepared a report for us that lays out the recognizable benefits for the city, starting on page ten of the report. And in here, where it talked about, actually, it's the standards, where it talked about open space. She indicated that there was sufficient open space in here, and they met that factor. I'm, I'm hoping you can help me understand how that factor, she determined it was met. Because I, the open space, from what I can tell, is their private patio area in the back. I don't see any benefit to the public by way of open space.
So Megan and I both prepared this report, just so you know. So I'm familiar with it. The open space or public plaza benefit, as written in the zoning ordinance, doesn't, it's, it's a, it's an or. The open space part does not have to be open to the public in order to fill that benefit requirement. So that pocket park in the southeastern portion, even though it might be intended for the residents, it is, it does still qualify as open space. Even though it's not a public plaza, so, open space or public plaza.
Public plaza, though, seems syndicated would be open to the public.
Right, so it's a provision of open space or the public plaza. So it can be one or the other. And, and it, I was struggling with, with understanding that as well, and it's a conversation that Megan and I had to figure out. Does the pocket part fit? Because it's, I mean, even if, I think the applicant previously stated in another meeting that it, it could be open to the public, but it's very, it's obviously intended for the residents of the, this, this development.
Is it gated, do you know, like?
I don't believe so.
Can I ask a follow-up, like, along that idea? So I think I also struggled with the complementary mix of uses because in a steering committee meeting, I very specifically asked her that it's often used to say, "Oh, well, it's a complementary mix in the city." And she said, "No, we mean in the project." But in the write-up, that doesn't seem to translate that way.
That would be, I, it's pretty vague, the way that it's written there, and that's probably why these conversations are happening. That would be something for you all to determine, because as written, it's vague in the current PUD section of the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
Hence the rewrite.
So are we going through one-thirty-eight, five-thirty-three then?
I'm just ask, I'm still asking questions before we go there. I just want to have a better understanding before we, I go through the analysis. Is, one of the comments we received by email from a resident talked about them going into the right-of-way for their private development. But I don't see that, and so I wondered if you had any idea if that, if any part of this development is going into the public right-of-way.
So I believe he's talking about the bridge.
Rooftop question for the applicant. You indicated that you couldn't see the plantings on the roof. My question is, could you see, I, I, I'm, how, how is it that you can't see plantings? And this is where I'm going. Can residents go right up to the edge and throw water bottles off the roof? I'm just, I, I'm trying to understand what would stop that.
So, so if we look at an aerial in one of those large-scale aerials. Of the new slideshow, yeah.
Tell me when to stop.
There. Okay, so if you look at that slide, you see all the little marching ants sitting there, right? Those are the air conditioners. The first fifteen feet, I'm estimating fifteen feet of the roof facing Coolidge is screened off and walled off from the roof gardens and is occupied by little air conditioning units. Does that, so they can't even get past, they can't get within fifteen feet of the edge? Or maybe more, I don't know.
Off of Coolidge.
Off to Coolidge, right. And on the other side is where their unit comes up, so they can't get to that edge at all. So they can just come out and, a space about like that.
And enjoy the sun.
That's right. The sun, the western, the western sun.
Okay, thank you.
So we've intentionally designed the back of the building to look like a residential roof. Right now in Berkeley, you could build a forty, you could build a house this high in the middle of a neighborhood. We're not exceeding any of the residential requirements, restrictions in Berkeley with this building. You could build a forty-foot building, house right next to a, a ranch, and it's perfectly allowed. We've put a roof facing the back of the building, no balconies on the third floor, and we're, so you won't see any of the residents, anyone on the roof from that side. And then there's a setback well, well beyond fifteen feet on the front side, very, actually further back than Phillips Row's balconies that were approved. I was up there a couple of weeks ago. They're a little closer than where we're gonna be on the Twelve Mile project, if that helps. And there'll be a parapet wall, so it's, we took all that into account and visualized that ahead of time.
Thank you. Just a couple more.
Sure.
Kristen, when we started this discussion, you explained to us the distance from the residential at thirty-one feet. Now that is from the building to the building.
Right. But that's only the north building, right?
That's the, that would be the south portion of the building, the north is even farther.
There's the, it's dimensioned on.
So it's thirty-one feet at the southern portion of the building, from the south building to the adjacent residential home. So that includes some of the property on the residential home.
And that's what I want to know, what is the distance to the property line? Do we know that?
It's about eighteen feet.
Which exceeds the fifteen-foot requirement by a little. Uh, question for the applicant, I know one of the residents had indicated there are a lot of trees that are coming down for this development. Any opportunity for? Any opportunity for trees at or near the property for, for installation to kind of compensate for all that?
If we can pull up the survey plan.
So you just tell me when to stop.
It's probably one of the first sheets. Keep going, one more, that one right there. So, in a short answer, no. These trees are in decline. Actually, they're really old trees, a lot of cottonwood trees. And the ones right along the property line, if they're on the other property line, we're obviously not touching them. If they're on this property, we're gonna have to take them down because if they're close to the property line, we're putting up the masonry wall fence, or the masonry wall for privacy. And then obviously, everything else in the middle. We are obviously not touching any of the existing large trees in the Coolidge right-of-way. And we're adding to that, uh, frontage landscape. And we're doing some more landscaping in the southeast corner to come up with some more landscape in the area. But, you know, most, all of the trees on site are basically coming down.
I guess those are all my questions.
Anybody else have questions? And we probably will as we go along. What is the commission's preference? To talk about standards first and then work on this, like, site map stuff? Or opposite? I guess maybe standards first.
The, the PUD standards?
The PUD standards.
Okay, sure.
Alright, so, can we all agree? I'm just gonna see what we can mark off without even having to discuss, right? No historic, that, that's not an option, right?
Which?
Historic, preservation. Yes, I'm sorry.
So, yeah, I guess to reiterate, it's one, yeah, 138, 533.
Okay, the benefits.
Those are the benefits.
Recognizable benefits.
The three that we, out of seven that we need to find in order to move forward.
That's right.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and it should be, I think, stated that the applicant can demonstrate to the city that the PUD provides for the protection of the integrity of the surrounding neighborhood. So that's first.
Right.
And now then this list of seven.
Yes.
Okay, and then.
Wait, well, I'm sorry, that's not in the list of seven, is it?
No, 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 it's part of the intro statement.
Got it, got it.
Yeah, start of the ordinance.
Yeah. And I, I had a question on this. So this says, "And at least three of the following site design elements that could not be attained through a project designed under conventional zoning." So when I was reading this, I was thinking of the alternate that could go here. And if this project is providing one of these, three of these seven at least. That's how I viewed that statement.
I guess the way I read that is, as it's currently zoned, any development that can go there without a PUD.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I think we're saying the same thing.
Okay, I thought you were talking about their alternate, what they were saying.
Not, not specifically theirs, but.
Okay.
What could be built there?
Yeah, what could be built there.
Okay, so I think we can cross off historic, right? We all agree that there's nothing historic that's being kept there.
Three?
Huh?
So number?
Number three.
Number three.
Okay, so no number three?
I believe in.
Well, number two. I don't think they've.
I was just trying to get off the super easy ones that we didn't have to talk about.
Oh, that's not super easy?
No.
Landscaping, yeah, no, I'm, I'm thinking landscaping's not. Shared vehicular access, I believe Carlisle Wartman was like, no. Do we agree that there's no?
I mean, I. I'd have to say yes.
I personally think it is because of the reassemblance of the properties.
Yeah.
But wouldn't that be consolidation of parcels?
And to me, it meets that too.
I think it could be both, yeah, and I don't know how you say no to six.
Shared vehicular access between properties or uses.
It's just consolidating multiple properties and making them accessible. I mean, that's a clear yes to me.
For shared vehicular access?
I mean, what, what are they sharing? They're sharing a public road.
Yeah, I mean, it's like, it's in this way, it's in this way, but you're still crossing over the public road.
And you have the parking potentially across too.
And I mean, the reality is, is yes, they're taking off curb cuts, but I live across there. They are very rarely used. It's like one person drives in, right, on the Coolidge curb cuts. And they're putting a much more intensive curb cut on the side street.
So I guess what, I'm trying to, I'm struggling with the definition of shared vehicular access.
So this would be like, I, I imagine a shared driveway for.
Multiple businesses.
So, so I represent communities along M-59. And, oh, one of the requirements is to eliminate curb cuts, is to require them to have the shared access drive and then have your own driveways leading to your business internally.
So I don't think it would be applicable to this type of use.
I mean, I would agree.
Right, so it's kind of an NA.
Okay. But how do we all feel about consolidation of parcels?
It's a pretty clear yes.
Yeah.
I feel like that's a yes as well.
Okay, I'll go with that.
So to explain, one of the biggest problems in our downtown with getting development, and then we worked through this with the master plan and everything else, was that lots are very shallow. So it's really hard to get anybody to develop there because there's not enough room for your business and your parking. And, and this is, the only way development can happen is when they acquire and combine parcels so that they can build something up.
One is pretty easy too.
So architectural design.
I think this is, I, I think it's a high-quality architectural design.
Okay, so this is where I'm gonna argue this because we have design guidelines. And I think the design guidelines really talk to this kind of structure where it's big and it's, uh, feels very massive. And because this is just all white and takes up two blocks, it feels, feels really massive. And so in our design guidelines, they really talk about that. Vertical articulation, horizontal articulation, varying building heights, varying colors. It even says that in the bigger ones, you probably have to use a few of those in order to make it feel not so massive. You don't have to make it smaller, but if you use these techniques, then you can make it feel smaller. And that is what we need to use just for a basic yes. That's even before, uh, beyond the basic standards.
Megan offered, uh, Michelle and Megan offered some suggestions that might help meet this goal. As far as a green wall or, um, or a mural. I don't know if the applicant has any thoughts on whether that's something he'd be willing to commit to or if he wants to wait to see if we get three other ones. Can he address us on the answer?
Sure, if you'd like to address, I mean.
There are also like a screen on part of it, or there, there is breaking up the white, I think.
Yeah, so we, I, I appreciate the, the comments and the way they're written about massing. And I, I can't even argue, they're, they make sense. The, the problem they have is that they can't contextualize, um, what we have here. We have a, a major thoroughfare, we have buildings of similar scale. We have a building that is fenstrated in a way that is scaled downwards. So it, it's not like a backside of a movie theater or something where it's a big blank wall. And there are other comments in the design guidelines that talk about, about staying away from residentially scaled things along this gateway district. So it'd been very, very easy to come along with a, with a Toll Brothers, Robertson Brothers set of townhomes and just line them all up, vertical roofline dormer, vertical roofline dormer. That's an insult. That's an insult to maybe make somebody feel comfortable and say, hey, you've seen it before, let it go. This is specific. And, um, and there's no reason, in my opinion, my professional opinion, to over-articulate, to, to try to tie into some paragraph that was written somewhere when you have your own set of context, your own set of eyes, where you can understand that this kind of, kind of mid-century manufacturing, maybe early manufacturing, kind of adaptive reuse, modernized feel, doesn't fit right. Because we think that it, uh, you know, we, we're pretty sure that it does. And we did articulate by kicking back the south. We articulated by adding the screen to the, to the center public space. It's articulated by having the bridge and the, and the under, uh, you know, the drive under, um, the roofline from the backside. If we could look at a backside where we wrapped around that, that bronze roof and came down an entire floor, canal lever it out. All of that is scale. All of that is, is, is a slightly more kind of a custom way of answering to the, to the thoughts in that paragraph. And, and, uh, yeah, that's, I mean, that's what we have. In terms of the, in terms of the murals and, and the green walls, we articulated the bottom floor parking to look like storefront and to kind of align with the, with the fenstration above it. And it would probably work fine if we didn't, if that was just a solid wall and then we planted it green for six months a year. Or if it was a solid wall and we put street art or murals. But just from an authentic standpoint, having it be, uh, basic storefront openings, again, filled with that same metal screening, um, is, is more, I don't know, thought-provoking, more authentic than, we don't have to hide any big blank walls with murals and things like that, I don't think. But if, if it was part of a public art type of requirement, as you know, we would certainly entertain the idea of that kind of thing. Thanks.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I, A42, that plan sheet, to me, and to me, it evokes like the high-quality design and materials that are mentioned.
I have, I have to agree with that too.
Yeah, if you go to that, because it has some good close-up views. That one right there. Because it has the wrapped roof on the back, and those are at different offsets on the top left. And then the fence, or the screening on those open walls on the Coolidge side, I think, provides like a lightness to the building. And then the glass on the balconies on those small Juliet balconies, like, I don't know. That, to me, it meets that standard.
Okay. I'm still holding with, to me, it doesn't. It still feels very big, imposing, and white.
I think we also have to note too that it's, the height requirement is, is met. So it's, I mean, even though it feels big, it's not too big based on the requirements.
I'm gonna suggest we pass this one and see if we hit three elsewhere.
Sure.
Landscaping.
I think I recalled, I know they're removing trees, but something like 400 new plantings were going in. For landscaping, so I think, I mean, that's a considerable amount of landscaping going in with the removal of the trees.
Although, as indicated, it's beyond site plan requirements. And our planners have indicated that they haven't offered anything beyond site plan requirements.
But don't forget, our site plan requirements are, don't know.
But we have to look at what we've approved in past, and, and does it, does it align? And I find it to be probably about what we would have approved in the past, right? I think we could get there, right? I'm also a little concerned because when I looked at some of those plants, they all seem to be full to partial sun. And I'm thinking that that area is not getting a ton of sun, based on your shadow studies. So, you know, I think, uh, wasn't, a, a living wall was mentioned at some point, which might help both things, right? Because it was mentioned under the architecture part, if I'm remembering correctly.
Yeah, a green wall.
Uh, a green wall. Or, or if we move into more things like rain gardens or a green roof or, you know, I think you can, I think you can get there with the landscaping in my, in my, uh, thoughts. I don't know that, I believe you're there yet, but I'm only one.
Yeah, I, I guess I, I think it is for what's going on the site. So, and I think we usually have a high standard when we look at some of our recent site plans anyways to be comparative. So those also are somewhat extensive, I guess, in a way. I think the Coolidge trees planting back on, like, because where those driveways are coming out, there'll be a new line of trees, it looks like to me on Coolidge, so that's a benefit.
Are you planting trees on Coolidge?
Not. Not in the right-of-way at this point. But if that's a requirement where the driveways come out, we could. But we'd have to work with the DPW on that right now to make sure that, that would be acceptable and not over existing utilities and such. And there's a comment on the landscaping. If you can compare to what, again, our compliance plan could be and what could be built right now, site plan-wise, the entire site would be basically building and parking lot with very little parking space. We wouldn't have to do any sort of additional landscaping and, uh, trash and benches and things.
You would have to do additional land, we would still have to find that your landscaping met our approval, right?
There is that finding. It's, as you know, very gray since we don't have any specific standards.
There's no standards, so.
But the planning commission is required to make a finding that the landscaping is appropriate.
Right.
So that's why we created that parking, pocket park and put in as much landscaping where we could as possible with the addition of also adding landscaping on the residential side if they want it, at our cost. So, I mean, we're packing in as much as we can.
Can I ask a clarification point?
Sure, can?
I just want to understand, when I asked earlier if there was any opportunity, any place that you could plant some additional trees to replace the ones taken down, you indicated no, not on the property. But, um, you just indicated that you might be able to put them in a public right-of-way?
There's already existing honey locust along Coolidge right now, in tree grates in there. Where the, obviously, they're not in the three driveway locations. And if the city would want to enhance that tree line with more trees, I think we would be amenable to that for sure. But that's, that's not on property, that's in the city right-of-way and would require.
City approval.
City approval and everything else. And it's like three or four trees. It just continues the line. On one of the bigger aerial, uh, bird's eye shots, you can see, they're shown there like that, so. I think those are the existing ones, though.
So you would be filling in, basically where the driveways come out, you'd fill it in with a tree if.
We could very easily do that, yes.
And I, we would have to check with DPW.
Right, for sure.
I mean, if they're in the same line as the existing trees, I would think that they wouldn't necessarily be over utilities, but I don't know for sure.
We also had discussions with two of the three neighbors to the east of the property about planting, when we build, planting on their side of the wall, uh, evergreens that could grow in pretty significant height. We did that at our office building and right next door. We have cedars that are 15 feet high now. Gets tremendous sun there through the course of the day. This would actually give a lot of sun, so it'd be good growth on those, on that side. So we've offered that to the neighbors as an additional buffer for their yards at our expense.
Thank you. And I like that idea. I don't love the idea of fulfilling, uh, landscaping above and beyond by using other properties and with which to do it, personally.
I guess my opinion is that it's probably already extensive and that would just be even more extensive.
Same for me.
Open spaces? Open spaces or public plaza?
I have a problem with open spaces and public plaza, but I will agree that it's met in light of our conversation with Michelle and our professional planners' recommendation.
Agreed.
I have a problem with it. I'm not sure that it meets that.
I agree.
With...
I'm not sure it does meet it.
I think the benches help, as shown here along. It's like a linear park along Coolidge, where it didn't exist before, for anybody to use.
The public streetscape improvements?
Yes, yeah, the street furniture and the streetscaping. The open space meets in the back, I guess, per, you know, for this prior discussion.
The landscaped patio that Michelle and Megan referenced in the southeast property corner, that's the pocket park you're talking about?
Right, right.
In the way the ordinance reads, it technically meets that requirement, in your opinion?
I believe so, yes.
Is there a rendering of that?
I saw one that showed the back of the property. I don't know if that's where the...
If anyone knows the sheet?
Yeah, I haven't seen anything, right?
Yeah, page eight of the PDF. Somewhat around, it's a plan view.
That shows the back of the property?
Yeah, you gotta zoom, like, right there, yeah. It shows all the plantings.
Actually, I saw something that showed the view from the back, which was helpful to me.
Of the garden, or...
Yes.
Really?
Let me see what page that was on.
Because it wraps around the, from Coolidge on the sidewalk, through there, too.
So there's that masonry wall separating the, to the east. There's nothing along, there's no wall along the south end, or how does that work? You said it wasn't enclosed.
Current, there's a wall there now, separates our park, our duplexes from Home and Doors Lot. Then we'll carry the masonry wall from there north, all the way across. So it'll be a full masonry wall. That whole corner, the back of the building, is wrapped, from Coolidge all the way over to Columbia's, wrapped in green, along a masonry wall.
So that path is open to the public, anyone can go through there?
It could, if they really wanted to walk through, cut through the back of the building, but we're not gonna gate it. I don't see it being a lot of public foot traffic, but we're not gonna gate it off. But the whole, from Coolidge all the way to Columbia's, wrapped in green space, with a masonry wall in front of it.
You're not gating that off?
No.
So, in our report, there is a rendering of the rear yard on page six.
In the plan set?
In the planner's report, page six.
Right, yeah. Yeah. There's like picnic tables and...
Yeah, where's the, where's the pocket park? Is that the whole back area is the pocket park?
Yeah, that's, that's out there.
So that's not individual patios, then? That's actually the...
Right.
Right.
And in the bottom left, there's, it looks like it's a gate. Is that intended to gate the whole thing?
You're talking about this here?
Yeah.
We're not, we're not gonna enclose that area. We might on the Coolidge side, just keep people from coming in and off of Coolidge, but there'd be access for people to walk through the project in and out. I don't think it's gonna become a public park, I'll be honest with you, but it's not gonna be walled in. And it will be public park for the residents of that building, for sure. So I've taken into account, these are, you have to count the people that live in the building someday. They're gonna get extra park space, right? So we can't forget their, their use of it, and they would be residents of Berkeley at that point, right?
Yeah, I...
Okay, so wait, is it, is there a gate there or not? Because I think you just said that there wasn't, but there is going to be a gate at Coolidge, so that people cannot walk from Coolidge into this, or see into this.
Would you like a gate, or would you not like a gate?
I'm just trying to figure out what your thought is. I feel better if there's not a gate, or if it's a very, like, see-through gate, so that, like, that at least walking past, you can, I mean, if it's not locked, then...
Right, it's not gonna be walled at all.
Yeah, it's not gonna be a wall.
Correct.
Or, or wooden gate, I think, you know what I'm saying, like, if it's a decorative gate.
There'll be ingress, there'll be ingress egress, for sure. So people get out that side of the building or in. If they're coming in from Coolidge, you wanna walk in that side of the gate, come through the back of the property, they'll certainly have access. We're not gonna wall it off on the Coolidge side. We hadn't gone that far, I think, with it.
How do we feel about doing some of those plantings, maybe along the side, that pathway? What is that pathway going to be? Is it cement? Is it patio block?
It looks like cement.
But it doesn't have a cement...
Right, I believe it was gonna be a crushed stone, to kind of keep it more aesthetic and more green and more non-paved, so permeable.
Okay.
So it can help in, yeah.
How do we feel about trying to incorporate, like, rain garden aspect into that area? Maybe not quite the back, but maybe along that pathway? Because you have the detention on the one side, it would be nice to have a little more green infrastructure on that side. Yeah.
So, we're actually, everything draining on that side is getting picked up, carried to the north side, into the detention, cleaned, and then discharged. So adding a rain garden on that side would create... Actually, we'd have to then take the rain garden drainage from there and make another tap into the city drain, instead of only having one tap after it's cleaned. So it actually defeats the purpose of the stormwater management plan.
Okay.
And the rain garden, sometimes, you know, some people like rain gardens, some people don't. This is a little bit more formal garden and, and landscaping, to keep it a little neater and tidier.
Okay. So everything from this side also is funneled into that detention?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So question for the applicant. Would you have any opposition if we conditioned, if, if we went that way? The requirement that you added, work with DPW to add additional trees, and in the agreement, the discussion you had with the neighbors regarding additional landscaping on their properties?
What I need the neighbors...
Would you be opposed to a requirement that you add additional trees, provided DPW allows them?
On the site? In which area?
In that driveway area that we were discussing.
In the right-of-way by where the curb cuts are.
On Coolidge.
Be happy if...
On Coolidge.
On Coolidge.
In the public right-of-way?
We'd be happy to put some trees in there.
On the city's property.
On the city's property.
Depending their approval.
DPW and city approval.
Yeah, I thought you meant on the neighbor's side. Where the neighbors, we're gonna try to get consent from them. I can't force somebody to let us plant beautiful plantings in their yard, but we'll try our best.
Yeah.
But in the right-of-way of the city, we'd be absolutely be in favor of doing that.
So there's an opportunity there for you to add landscaping by those trees, provided the city authorizes it?
Happy to do it.
I think it would continue the line, personally, because it's like, if you looked at this plan, it's like they're just missing.
Sure.
I don't know if that helps anybody on the landscaping issue.
Chair Kempner, if I could interject one thing on the neighbor plantings. I'm sure we could craft something in the agreement, if the applicant was willing, that deferred to the neighbors' preferences, or something like that.
Yeah.
X amount of trees, or whatever, or just something that, yes, you can't force them, right? If they don't want it, they don't get it, but maybe it makes them feel better that not knowing you, or, you know what I'm saying, like, that, yes, I'm going to do this for you.
I've met them all. Two out of three would very much like, one, the project to go, and two, to put some plantings on their side of the, of their wall. And we did this on our project, so I was able to show them what we did across the street, and it buffers us from the neighbors completely. They, we don't know, they don't know we're there. And they're, they're cedars, they're evergreen, they grow in height, they're scaled nicely, they're beautiful trees, and it, and it buffers our property, so it looks nice from our property going back into the residential neighborhood. We're not looking at someone's kitchen window or hearing their barbecue.
All right, so let's revisit that. With those ideas, how are we feeling on landscaping?
I could live with it.
I'm good.
Still a yes for me, yeah.
I could live with it.
All right, so I feel like we have landscaping and consolidation of parcels.
With conditions.
With conditions.
Okay.
How are we feeling? We haven't talked about complementary mix of housing types or uses.
So I read this, and we can defer to Carla Worman. I read the second part, because complementary mix of uses doesn't really apply, because it's one use. But, or a variety of housing, and I read this as, from the community standpoint, it's a variety of housing. That's how I read it. Not the whole development itself is providing a variety of housing.
Okay.
That's how I interpret it.
Sure.
Would defer, like, maybe there's a different thought on that, but that's how I feel.
I think both are true, though.
True, both are true, okay, okay.
Yeah, I read, I read Michelle Megan's report to say, yeah, the difference in housing meets the master plan.
Yes.
And it probably is sufficient, but if they added retail, it definitely would be sufficient. And that's how I read her analysis. Is that about right?
Yes.
I'll stick with the fact that when I asked her if that means a mixture of housing types in the project, she told me yes, and this does not fit that.
It doesn't fit what?
A mixture of housing types in the project.
But it's, they do have different units, right? They have studios.
That's still one type of house. That's still multi-family housing, as opposed to single-family. It's like an apartment, whether it's a big apartment or a little apartment, it's still an apartment, as opposed to like a townhouse, or a, you know, a mixture of those kinds of things. This is what, when I specifically asked her, because I said this has always come up during every PUD, and there's always a, like, well, what does that mean? She was like, no, it means in the project.
So in the development is what we're looking at?
Yes.
I mean, what development would have a variety of housing? I just don't think that makes sense.
I mean, again, these were written in the eighties, so also confusing.
I take it as the variety of housing, the intent of the master plan. That's, I, that's how I fully view it.
I mean, there, you know, like you mentioned, there are some developments that do have two-story townhouses, and then one-story condos, and then another wing with just apartments. And I think those are more conducive to larger developments.
For sure.
But, yeah, as it written, as it's supposed to be interpreted, yeah, there's, there's one type, is how I'm seeing it.
Okay, so we're back to a question mark on that. All right, so we have a yes on consolidation of parcels, a yes on landscaping. I'm not sure where we landed on open spaces. I think Lisa and I were no on open spaces.
Well, I, I thought she was a yes, based on...
Or did we get to yes? I'm sorry.
We got to yes with the further explanation by Michelle about the language as drafted in our zoning rules.
And maybe it was Commissioner Wood, so it was a no with me. Somebody was a no with me.
Yeah.
Could I just get clarification on, I, I guess, I know our role is to approve things that meet the zoning. So does that... Does that explanation that we got earlier, does that mean that meets that zoning, and we should approve that?
So it's the opinion of our planning consultant that, yes, it meets that standard.
I mean, we would be under an obligation, essentially.
This is a, PUDs are different, they're a discretionary decision. So it's not like a site plan where you either have fifteen feet setback, or you don't. It's, it's up to your interpretation, and we provide you, and our planning consultant provides an opinion of whether or not we would interpret it that way.
So you would interpret it as yes, but you're, it's our discretion as to, okay.
I guess, I don't know if we're getting too in the weeds here, but how, how do you determine what an open space is? Like, what is the bare minimum of what an open space is?
So I will defer to Michelle.
Uh, well, there should certainly be green space involved. There's not like a minimum area. It has to, it has to be accessible and honestly, there's a lot of gray in here.
So, because, so, I mean, if we're, if we're being, I don't know. It, it could literally be a bench in a, in a patch of grass.
Well, open space would intend, be intended to be more like natural landscaping. That being said, you could also have it be more polished landscaping. I forget the terminology that was used, but like a straight lawn wouldn't really qualify as open space, otherwise we have open space in every, every property in town, right?
So like an activated space, something that's being used for something.
And what are the, what are the dimensions of this open space, out of curiosity? Is it shown on there, or just a rough estimate?
Something eighteen by something, because it's eighteen from the back.
Go back to the plans, it's gonna take me a second. And you, you tell me when to stop, Joe.
Right, go back, um, not the next one.
Looks like it's twenty feet wide.
So, it's probably about, I think, because we're, the, the house to the east from the property line, I believe is like ten feet, so we're like twenty-one feet all along that edge from the building to the property line, that is filled with an activated landscape space. It's planted, it's green, there's patio, there's areas, there's a walking path. If the residents have a small dog or a dog, they could walk out there and use that as a recreational space. It's also, you know, some benches, quiet, there's lots of landscaping. You know, it's not just a lawn with a bench. You know, we, we really want this to be a very nice design, welcoming for the residents to gather out there, socialize, and use the space.
Question for Michelle. Lisa?
Yes.
Nice question for me. Michelle, the, the report that was prepared by your office under the preservation, uh, under the provision for open space and public plaza says the plan includes public streetscape improvements along Coolidge Highway and the landscaped patio. What part of that public streetscape improvement are you considering meeting the requirement of open space or public plazas? Because, A, isn't it in a public right-of-way? Can that count? And B, is it an open space if it's cement?
So they have proposed some landscaping, some benches.
Is it, do we have a, a rendering, so we can...
The benches are indicated, is this them right there?
Correct. So our proposed streetscape along Coolidge is on property, not in the public right-of-way.
Okay.
So the areas where we have the benches and a trash receptacle all along both sides, north and south, are on our property, and we're adding that for the public benefit. We're not taking up any additional public right-of-way, but as we have discussed, we can add more trees if that's also in the public right-of-way. So we're doing both.
And I, I think that really meets the intent of this.
I agree.
I agree. Of the plan? I knew I saw a rendering of it.
So that leaves two, four, and five, so far, is met?
Well, I don't think we agree on five yet, so I don't know. Lisa, do you wanna do like a straw poll and see where we're at on five?
I think we got five, which...
That's the count of parcels.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, for the open space.
Oh.
Right, yeah, four.
Thank you.
Four, right. Um, all right, where are we on open spaces? You're a yes?
I'm, yes, I think it's...
Yeah, I think it does.
Yes.
Yes.
I think it's as good as they can get it.
I can live with it. Commissioner Ernstman?
Oh, yes.
Alright, so are we in agreement then that it meets landscaping, open spaces, and consolidation of parcels?
Landscaping with conditions.
With conditions.
And, yes.
Yeah.
So it would meet the recognizable benefits.
Without, if we don't want to get into the other ones, then, don't know if you want to tally them all up or not.
If you feel like you can come to agreement, it would be worth it, just based on what I'm hearing. I don't know that you're all going to agree on the other ones. The council would have the minutes and could also go back and watch the meeting to, to get your comments and discussion and, and consider that as part of their consideration.
Okay.
But it's up to you. If you guys want to try, give it a try.
One and seven for the last, for the only other ones.
Yeah, and I, I'm a yes for one and seven, so I think five of the seven are met.
Okay.
Likewise.
I'm a no for one and seven.
Likewise.
I don't remember what I. I'm, uh, I agree on, I'm a no on one without any additional, um, agree that I'm a no on one without any additional, um, elements. Honestly, I'm not clear on seven. I'm not clear on what the ordinance requires, frankly, because the way I read this. I, it, it seems to indicate the fact that, um, they're providing studios and one-bedroom units. And that the master plan identifies the goal of diversifying housing choices. I, I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not sure on seven. I guess, I don't, I'd have to.
You don't have to. You don't have to have a strong opinion at this point.
Strong opinion, yeah, on seven.
Okay. Thoughts?
Uh, I guess yes on one and seven. Could I ask a question on one?
Yeah.
So with the trees, the additional trees that would be planted on Coolidge, would that, I guess, partake kind of into the one? In terms of breaking up some of that building color, at least from the roadway?
I mean, to me, no, but the way, these are all so squishy in a PUD that, uh, you know.
I think because it talks about architectural design, I would, I would agree, it doesn't help that.
I think that would be, it would pertain more to number two. Question of trees, right, landscaping.
Yeah, that's the condition we're agreeing that.
Okay, so. Yeah, full approval on three of them. And some approval on the others, or on two others. Um, alright, so is there anything on the site itself that we feel like we need to address? Because I have some notes if nobody else does.
Now, you're saying before we go into the standards for approval? Or it's part of standards for?
So. PUDs are wonky, right? So we still have to kind of approve the site as well, right? As well as the standards. We can just say that it meets this and then, like, move on to this part, um, or we could just do it all in one fell swoop.
I have a couple plan corrections or things to throw out there before we get into the deviations from the standards. Because I think, or the, there's like three, three things that Kristen mentioned that we have to cover.
And let me double check with Kristen. Is this an okay process, or do you want us to make a motion about the standards first before going into talking about the site?
This is fine, you can, you can do this.
Okay.
So, on A one point zero. I think this is left over from last time in the top right corner. Thanks, Kristen, for, uh, um, it's the parking one. Uh, yeah, a little higher there, in the top right corner.
Right here?
Yeah. The one table says site parking seventy-nine, but the formula say eighty, so I guess just just double check that on there. That little table on the left says seventy-nine, but then down, yeah, down below, it actually has eighty, so.
What sheet number is this, Joe?
A one point oh. Yeah, and then the parking information table on the right for those notes still says assigned parking. So I guess if you guys could clarify that that's for the tandem parking, just because, um. To your, to your point, too, I was, I was thinking like, oh, this is assigned totally, but it's, it's not assigned. So how, however that note needs to be adjusted on the, uh, parking information to what the tandem parking is assigned and not the full eighty spots, yeah.
So the tandem parking is under the south side of the building, which is where the bigger units are. Okay, the, there's all one bedrooms on, on that south side of the building. So if someone was likely to have two vehicles, they would be likely on that side of the property, or that, that part of the building. That's where we put the tandem. So there's, I don't know how many, there's seven tandem, uh, seven tandem, total fourteen spaces there.
Yes.
So, can I ask, because I think up until this meeting, you've mentioned that they were all assigned. What made you decide to not make them assigned?
I don't think we need to assign them, because we have more, more parking than we need for the residents. The tandem will be assigned, because if you have two vehicles, we want you to take up two side-by-side spaces when you could utilize.
Sure.
Make better use of those. Otherwise, you could have one person parking a two-space spot that's not there. But we, if you weren't assigned a tandem spot, then you couldn't park in a tandem spot. So to it, to an extent, where it's, where it matters for parking usage, we will assign those spots.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Will, will parking stickers be involved?
Yes. Yeah, management will handle, handle that, and the residents will know where they're supposed to park. But otherwise, you, for the open space, you, you pull on it.
Not that I am, uh, of the opinion of make, of forcing this, but um, I do think you have more parking spots than you'll have to need. Um, so I think it'd be a marvelous idea to make thing a parking spot or two by each door, be a fifteen minutes or less, so that when people are getting deliveries, they have a designated spot that they can easily pull in, run up, deliver whatever they're delivering, food, groceries, what have you, and then run back down. Just a thought.
We're considering lockers on the first floor, service lockers, uh, that the residents would have access to for deliveries to go into in the vestibules. And then the, they could, we, it does need deliveries on the first floor to make it quicker, so vehicles, delivery trucks could pull up right next to it, get out, and continue to move on without, without blocking the ingress or egress.
I'm sorry, I totally interrupted.
No, no, I only have one more. So the signed parking note, I guess, I guess we all understand what it is. I'm not sure from a, a agreement if that even has to be in there or corrected and be more specific in that top note. I'm just pointing it out because it was a confusion. And the eighty and seventy-nine is off somewhere. This, the last thing I have is this no east turn on side streets. Now, I think this is out of those parking lots. I mean, I'm not I don't, I'm not in favor of prohibiting that through signage or anything like that. Like, and I know we talked about this before. I don't know if it's, if it's on here. I know you're not going to actually channelize those to try to force folks to go one way or not, but I really don't think it's necessary.
I agree.
So, I don't know if it should still be on here, because it's kind of confusing if these are the same.
We'll take you to make that condition. We won't, we won't restrict that, uh, through signage. That was more an accommodation to some of the neighbors' thoughts about cut-through traffic going into the neighborhood as opposed to going onto Coolidge. So we were trying to be accommodating in that regard, but I think from a practical standpoint, it will not be enforced, be able to be enforced.
No.
How are the rest of us feeling? Before we move forward and go, yeah, you don't need that. Do we feel okay about that?
Like, you didn't know channelize?
Not forcing everybody to have to go onto Coolidge.
Through signage only. Yeah, it's definitely not channelized.
I'm okay with that, right.
Because you could take a right or a left and just go out the first street and then hit eleven mile, one block over, so it's likely people would probably avoid the, want to avoid the light at eleven and Coolidge anyway.
I feel like we asked for that.
We discussed it. It was not like an ask. It was just a.
Yeah, we just guessed it, and then I think they took in feedback from residents and stuff and put it in.
Several residents did mention it at the September meeting.
I feel like we talked about it when I was here in the original.
Yeah.
The sketch plan.
We did, we did talk about it, and.
And, and we asked for the signage because the neighbors were concerned about cut-through traffic, and that was an accommodation, because he wasn't going to build the driveways that limited it one way or another. And that was, I believe, that was a compromise. But I'm, the, I, this is a long time ago now that we've had this meeting, but that was my recollection.
Because I think channelized, I don't know how that came up. I think that was just floated.
So the word channelized is when you build the driveway to only go one way?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So it curbs you out one way.
Right.
Um, and I don't think that's necessary. I think signage is good.
Yeah, I guess I don't think the, the signage is necessary at all. Like, I think the residents that live there should be able to go into the neighborhood.
Because I remember we talked about Einstein.
Correct, yes.
Did we talk about Alcatraz then, too?
Yes, because, um, you can't turn down the side street from Einstein bagels.
Right.
Right, well, well, some of us honor that.
Well, yes, and some of us do it Alcatraz, too, but I'm like, you're protecting me from me.
Right.
Like, I now have to like drive around and crazy to get home, when this would have been so much easier.
I guess, I guess my point is, we had people that were concerned about the cut-through traffic. We added that as a requirement, or asked that that be a requirement, so I don't want to just dismiss it without recalling the conversation and the reason we originally had concerns about it. So, just want to make sure we all remember that discussion.
We did, but I think at the sketch plan, it wasn't necessarily like a condition.
Right, no, I agree.
Yeah.
And I think, um, I feel like these are our reactions generally that are thought, like, right, keep it all away from us, but also Coolidge is really busy. So, you know, it's kind of like a no-win situation. Um, the residents, they're not, not all fifty-seven units, right? Are, aren't, are not going to all leave at the same time and get in their cars and zoom out down the streets. It's, you know, um. I, I think it'll be okay. When, when Coolidge moves faster, they'll, like, everybody else in the city, they'll take Coolidge. And when Coolidge is slow and it's easier to get somewhere by a side street, like everybody else in the city, they'll take a side street.
Well, I personally prefer it stay in, but I'm just one vote, so I.
Oh, I don't think it's needed.
Okay.
I think it can cause more issues.
I don't think it's needed, so. I don't want to cause confusion in the site plan if it's on there, and some signs go up and, and, and whatnot, so.
I don't feel passionate about it either way.
Okay. Um, anybody have anything else on the site plan? Um, I, where's the sheet that had the snow? You have your snow load area as being half over the public sidewalk where they have to walk?
The snow load is, first of all, the only snow load is going to be for the sixteen spaces on that property.
Sorry, can you, I've got this bent, so I can barely hear you.
Sorry. Um, the snow load, there's only going to be snow removal on the sixteen spaces that are not covered by the building. And we have accommodated space on the property for plowing the snow that's not in the public right-of-way. Those shaded areas, there was a, um, site plan that showed our snow load.
Yeah, it just has it going over the sidewalk.
It.
On A one point one.
It, it will not go over the sidewalk, and we have, uh, plenty on, we've got space on both sides of that plow.
Yeah, the other side, it doesn't show it going on the sidewalk.
Yeah. The one in Columbia.
Yeah, again, it's, it's only that one strip of snow.
I, I do thank you for having those, uh, the views of pulling out, because that helped, because at first I was like, wait, no, but then I realized there are the windows there, too, and so.
Completely transparent for pedestrians, bikers, and cars.
Oh, and then my other thing is, um, when you're putting in benches and trash receptacles, work with the DDA to make sure that those kind of match what else is, is going in throughout the downtown, so it looks nice and harmonious. Okay, I think that's all I have. Anyone else?
No.
Chair Campion, could I just make a couple comments, because I feel like the commission might be heading towards a motion of things that probably should be considered?
Sure.
Um, so one is if you're making a motion for approval, it would have to find that the project meets the standards of one thirty-eight, five thirty-seven, and that's standards one through seven.
We haven't gone through those yet. That was coming next, right? You did the site plan first, then we were going to go through the standards. We haven't gone through the standards yet.
No, five thirty-three.
We did the benefits, not the standards.
Right.
Yes, you're right. Do you want me to pause then, and, or do you want me to continue?
You can continue, and I'll make notes about what our motion needs to have, while you've got it in your head.
And then, um, meets three of the seven recognizable benefits in one thirty-eight, five thirty-three, and then I would identify what of those you think are met. And then also, um, if you could make sure to include deviations for the deficient setback along Coolidge, the deficient parking. And also, um, the lack of, uh, commercial or retail or office use on the first floor. Sorry, I jumped the gun.
That's okay.
So should we handle those first three? For the diff- uh, the deficiencies from the actual zoning ordinance? So the setback.
I, I will defer to the chair, but I definitely want to talk about those.
About the deviations? Alright, let's talk about deviations. Um, let's take it bit by bit. Setback, how are we on setback? Are we okay with the deviation of the setback?
This is along Coolidge.
Coolidge.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's, that's fine.
Alright.
No issue.
Easy peasy. Um.
Parking, this is number two.
Lack of commercial? I'm trying to see which one's easier.
You know, listen, I, I don't like that it doesn't have retail, and it's a requirement under our ordinance sitting here today.
Right.
But with the information provided, that it is anticipated, that with the new zoning ordinance rewrite, it's not going to be a requirement, and multiple family is going to be required. In light of that, I'm, don't feel as strongly about that issue.
Okay.
I agree.
And.
Agreed, yeah.
I agree, and can I clarify? It, that is the sole reason why this is a PUD, right?
Well, the parking is also a reason.
Can I mention the bridge?
The bridge is unique. The ordinance definitely doesn't speak to a bridge.
I mean, but it doesn't prohibit a bridge, right?
Prohibit a bridge, but it's the use and the parking are really the key elements.
Okay, yeah.
Alright, so we're okay with the lack of commercial? We're okay with setback parking?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not comfortable. And I'm not comfortable, obviously, because of the other issue that the city had for a very long time, and the impact it had on the people who live on those streets. And so if I were to sign off on the parking, I understand that you said you were comfortable with it, and you think they have enough. Um, and I understand what was said about parking, but we aren't going to know until the building is built and the units are occupied and the visitors are visiting, if this is going to be a problem. And so if I, for me to be comfortable with this parking issue, again, I'm one vote, I would like a requirement in the PUD agreement, that if this becomes an issue in the future at the city's discretion, um, a requirement, or can be added, that the the developer, the owner must have a plan to address the issues. I wish I could tell you what that plan could be. Obviously, I would much prefer if we had some sort of shared parking agreement with direction to all the tenants to direct their, their occupants to park in that area. Um, I, I mean, I, I.
So is it is it what concerns you, the visitor parking, or, uh, resident parking, or, or something, I don't know, either?
I'm concerned about parking on the residential streets, up and down the streets, like the issue that we had with Vincetta.
Okay.
Is that's through the residents that are going to live there, or the visitors that would come and park?
The single-family homes that are on the streets right now.
Right, but like the people that will go park there, are you concerned they're going to be residents or visitors?
I mean, so, like, my thought is, it, like, he was saying that it was going to be assigned. If it was back to assigned parking, would it make you? If it was back to assigned parking, would it make you feel better? Or no?
Well, okay, we're talking about 57 units. Maybe a dozen of the units could have visitors at a time? That's a lot of parking. Maybe, I, I'm just, I'm very gun-shy on, on what could happen on those streets and how it will affect the people who live on those streets. And, and, and the cars in front of their houses and visitors that are leaving late at night with car doors slamming. And those are the things I'm concerned about. That could be an issue.
Yeah, I.
Do you remember how many parking spaces? Did you identify how many parking spaces along Coolidge?
Yeah, there's a, there is a drawing, sorry not to speak for them. There's a plan that shows it. There's 30, I think.
What sheet is that, Joe?
A 1.0.
Eight one, A what?
I guess, uh, as far as the, the tentativeness.
Oh, right.
With the 1.49 and it's 80, by code, it would only be 57 times two required. So the only contingency or condition should really only address the number that would, by ordinance, be required for the development. If there was a condition, I don't think there needs to be at 1.49 compared to two.
Would, help me understand what you're saying. You're saying that.
So in order for this to not even have a parking deviation, they would just have to provide 114 spaces.
Right.
And they're providing 80.
Right.
And then it wouldn't even be an issue, though.
Correct.
Yeah, so.
If they provided 114, there wouldn't be an issue.
There would not. It wouldn't even be something to debate, I guess.
Right.
So, I don't know, I think the 1.5 is sufficient. Um, the visitor thing is, shouldn't, I'm not really sure that that's particularly addressed within an ordinance, like visitors, per se? You know, like.
I mean, we usually have some, or many, I guess, have or somehow build in visitors, but some will say, like, one per bedroom plus, you know.
I guess I'm struggling to, like, if we're, if we're sort of expanding to visitors, it's, it's no different than me having a party for my daughter at my house and having 20 people come park on the street that day.
Well, how often are you going to have a party?
Well, that's what I'm saying, like, we don't, it's hypothetical, too. It, it's, but I'm just saying, it's hypothetical to, to say, you know, is this going to happen daily or weekly with visitors? You know, and how many visitors will there be, you know, parking? I, it's going to happen, but it's hard to get into the weeds on that because it's all speculation, I guess. It's what I'm struggling with.
No, I get that, but I think the, the issue is the concentration of people in one area. And, you know, sure, your, your one house having a party, but there's, you know, four units having multiple people over, it doesn't have to be a huge party, but that equals your one party of 20 cars.
Right.
In all parking in the same area.
Well, okay, so extrapolate that out to, I live by the funeral home. So every time there's a funeral, my entire street is lined with cars. And it happens quite frequently. But I, I mean, I guess I'm just struggling to see, you know, is that an issue? Or is that just a byproduct that's going to happen? If there's a business that gets put on this property, will that still happen? You know, probably so.
Well, then, I mean, is that the reason why some other cities have parking by permit only? Because that is a, that could be an issue of.
And I think that goes to our parking study that we did in the city. Um, and that's part of the reason why I think they're trying to, to revamp the zoning now in terms of the parking is, I think it's too high, and there's, there's always going to be a balance. But I, I would just caution us to not get too deep into a hypothetical, you know, what-if in terms of if we think the parking is, is solid for the structure that's being put.
I guess I'm suggesting a contingency plan in whatever agreement there is. If there's a problem, this is how it's going to be dealt with.
Well, I mean.
Is that something you would be open to, to, to have a plan?
First of all, there's, there's no overnight parking allowed in the city. That's a, or that's a, a police enforcement issue.
Between two and six.
Correct. So that's an enforcement issue we have nothing to do with. Uh, people have guests over, we have access parking right now for the residents we have. We think we're sufficient with what we're proposing for this project with guests. Uh, I don't really think it's appropriate to encumber, uh, other properties that I own with a parking requirement for a what-if when this project meets normal standards. So we will not, uh, agree to a contingency at the city's full discretion to say I now have to offset parking in an office building where I am full of 30 people every day to provide parking or the building across the street. In the evenings, those lots are open. It would be practical if someone chose to park there, be fine. But I would not enter into an agreement or stipulation, given the city the authority over my other parking lots in the area, if that answers your question.
Which makes you, which means you're not comfortable with, uh, parking.
Yeah, I'd like to see a contingency, uh, uh, some mechanism to address an issue. And I'm not even being specific on what that plan needs to be, but that there be a plan that is triggered if there's a problem. But I, I mean, I'm, I'm one vote.
Yeah, and I'm okay with the 1, if we're going around, I'm okay with the, with the deficient parking waiver, or not waiver, but.
I, I, I too would like to see a contingency plan.
I'm good with the parking as-is.
Can a contingency plan be something as simple as if there is a, you know, a demonstratable issue with repeated parking issues that they can come back in front of us to work it out?
I think that would get really tricky because if this is built and there's a parking issue and they come back, you can't revoke their approval, it's already constructed. So I think that that would be hard to do.
I mean, so what is it deficient? What did we decide? It's like 24?
It's, I think it's 34 spaces.
And there's 30 spaces directly on Coolidge in front of it? I mean, I feel comfortable with the amount of parking that's there. And I can't come up with anything that would solve the need for a contingency plan, right? Like, I'm drawing a blank on what that would be. How do you feel?
Uh, I feel fine with parking.
Okay.
And I think the, if there was a contingency plan, they probably would have already implemented it into the plan, so.
I, I would think the contingency plan would have to be on the city's side. You know, and is, would the city be, be prepared to require permit parking for certain parts of the street?
So I can speak to that just generally. We just did a parking study, and that was one of the topics we discussed. And it was determined permit parking would not be something the city would be willing to do anywhere at this point.
So no contingency plan.
It's fine, it's in the meeting minutes.
The two to six is somewhat a contingency.
It's in the meeting minutes, maybe city council will look at it.
They can look at it, too.
Maybe they have a brilliant idea. Um, all right, so we have a majority for parking, but not a unanimous. Okay. Um, and then standards. That was in last month, right? Unless somebody has the standards right in front of them as I'm trying to pull them up.
Yes, yeah.
All right. Um, "A recognizable and material benefit to the ultimate users of the project and to the community where such benefit would otherwise be unfeasible or unlikely to be achieved without the application of the PUD regulations." Uh, "The proposed type and density of use."
Are we ever going to like?
I'm just going to read them all, and then if somebody has an issue, we'll break it down. Does that sound reasonable, or does somebody know they have an issue immediately?
This is just a general, I mean, these aren't weighed one by one, they're weighed globally together. Is that the way this part of it is?
These are standards that we must consider.
Shall.
Right. Globally. It's, if you.
I mean, we can, I, I think we can say, yes, it meets all of these standards. If you feel better with us picking them apart one at a time, we can do, all, all right, let's rec. Okay. "A recognizable and material benefit to the ultimate users of the project and the community where such benefit would otherwise be unfeasible or unlikely to be achieved without the application of the PUD regulations."
So I agree with the Carl, Carlisle-Wartman report, which indicates that it does appear to be met.
Yes, I do, too.
Same.
Likewise. "The proposed type and density of use shall not result in an unreasonable increase in the need for or burden upon public services, facilities, streets, and utilities."
Does not, I don't think. I mean, it meets this, so there's no, there's no burden, yeah.
Potentially with parking.
And I think public safety and, uh, public works voice their support, too.
I have signed off on it.
They have all signed off on it. "There shall be underground installation of utilities, including electricity and telephone unless otherwise approved by the city."
It's already there, I think, so that's all true.
And they're implementing that stormwater.
I don't, I don't know. Right, because she says she deferred to the DPW to determine if the standard has been met.
DPW felt like all the utilities were taken care of.
Okay, thank you.
"The proposed development shall be consistent with the public health, safety, and welfare of the city."
Yes.
That goes to the master plan commitment, you know?
Again, I agree with Carlisle-Wartman's review of this standard.
"The proposed development shall not result in an unreasonable negative economic impact around surrounding properties." I mean, I think generally, development in the DDA is good for properties.
Right.
Whether it's residential or commercial.
Yeah, I can't say whether it has a negative economic impact on the residential properties directly behind it. The applicant has indicated that two of those properties are in support of this project. Um, so I guess it's fine.
I mean, I, and this one, I think, is a, um, a rough one because everyone will find a study that says it made my housing prices go down, it made my housing prices go up. I'll say that Harvard Commons went up right behind my house, and it was a beautiful field, and now there's like big townhouses, and my housing prices still keep going up, so.
And it's unreasonable negative, so.
That's true, it's unreasonable.
Yeah.
"The proposed development shall be under single ownership or control such that there is a single entity having responsibility for completing the project in conformity with this division."
Yep.
Yes.
I believe so. I mean, I, that might be a city ultimate check, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good. "The proposed development shall be consistent with the goals and policies of the master plan."
Yes.
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Again, relying on, um, Carlisle-Wartman's reports, analysis of these standards.
I feel like you're, I feel like you're, you're setting up to make a, to make a motion.
I've not made. You don't want me to make a motion because I'd add my contingency plan to it. Unless we're taking deviations separate, we probably, no.
No.
It should be one motion.
Right, yeah. It's going to be an interesting, complicated one.
Yes, as PUDs are. All right, who wants to make us, unless anybody has any further comments, questions, thoughts? Somebody's going to make us, has to make a stab at a motion, and I think Lisa just took herself off the table, so.
Do you want to do it, or do you want?
I can do it, yeah, yeah, I have notes, so, pretty good, yeah. Okay, so, um. This is going to be a motion to approve, right?
Recommend.
Or recommend approval.
Recommend approval.
Yeah, recommend approval for PUD 0123, the Columbia, with the following deviations from the zoning ordinance. Uh, the deficient setback on Coolidge will be allowed. The, uh, deviation from the parking will be allowed. And the deviation from the use of the property containing lack of commercial space will be allowed. Those are the, those are the three, yes. Uh, the planning commission also finds that per 138, 533, three of the PUD recognizable benefits are met, which are the extensive landscaping with conditions that the applicant work with the DPW for trees to be planted in the Coolidge right away.
And the neighbors.
Yep, and, and, um, uh.
The applicant.
And, yeah, and the applicant will work with the three abutting properties to provide landscaping contingent upon their approval.
Which will be incorporated in the PUD agreement.
Uh, yes, I think, yeah. Which will be, all of these will be incorporated in the PUD agreement. Um, the fourth recognizable benefit is a provision of open and public spaces has been met. And the fifth, efficient consolidation of poorly dimensioned parcels has been met.
Three have been met.
Three of the seven, yeah. Lastly, the standards of 138, 537, the standards for approval of the PUD, 138, 537, uh, the planning commission finds that all seven of these standards, uh, are approved or are met for approval.
Support.
Kristin, would you like to call roll?
Yes, Commissioner Stapp?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamame?
No.
Commissioner Arntman?
Yes.
Commissioner Woods?
No.
Commissioner Bardis?
Yes.
And Commissioner Kempner?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero, the next step, or I'm not, sorry, four to zero, four to two. The next step will be council.
Do you know when that, when it'll be, go to council?
It will probably go at the next meeting in November, unless that's already too full of an agenda, in which case it would get bumped, but probably November.
Okay. All right, thank you all, as you're leaving, for coming and commenting and presenting and all of that good, happy stuff. It's always nice to see bodies in seats. Um, all right, moving on, PSP 0823, 3055, and 3063, 12 Mile.
Give me just a second. Okay, um, so this is a much simpler discussion item for you this evening. This is just a site plan. Um, if there's updates to more than 50% of a facade, which in this case is proposed, it does require a planning commission approval. There were no additional staff comments to address, they did address the comments in the staff review. And they have submitted the required design guidelines narrative. And staff does recommend that this brings the building much closer to the design guidelines in terms of materials. Um, should the commission choose to make a motion, it should include a finding that the site materials and architecture meet the standards of site plan approval per section 138, 679. The applicant's here this evening, I'm available to address any questions.
Hi, would you like to give us a little?
A little, yes.
No PowerPoints for you, right?
No, no need.
Blame Kristin, blame Kristin for the order of this.
It's okay, this was good stuff. Great-looking project. Zaid Erbo from Z8 Design Build, representing Jay Elifshay, owner of.
Zaid Erbo from Z A Design Build, representing Jay Elifshay, owner of the building. Uh, first of all, I wanna say I'm offended that Channel Two left so quickly. We have a little bit to offer here and, um, yeah. Anyways, um, existing building, out of date, old, um, you have a tenant, right? A salon?
Yes.
Coming in, um, not your typical salon, you know, with a few rooms and, um, um, it's not your typical open salon, so it's pretty complicated designing. Not too complicated, but again, atypical. And we're basically, there's, um, a continuous parapet with an unsightly looking awning. And two towers at the end, taking all that off, we're squaring it up. We're putting, um, metal coping all the way around the top, there is a rendering somewhere in there, very, uh, simple, uh, one dimensional rendering. So black coping all the way around, um, sort of a brown beige Nishi high. Um, that blue is not very representative, it's gonna be like a midnight blue or real dark blue, that's existing stone. That's gonna be, um, painted on with some wall sconces. Um, there's some planters, uh, there's some existing elevations that were in the prior page, but there's some planters going across those two openings that you see from the left and the right. Which is basically east and west off of, uh, Twelve Mile. Those will be eliminated, basically all glass from top to bottom, seven feet, we exceed, um, we're within that range for the, you know, um. Storefront percentage. Uh, the rear of the property, pretty simple, um, also painting, uh, the existing masonry there with the midnight blue. We're throwing a, um, can you go one more page if you don't mind?
Sure.
We're just throwing, um, a simplified awning, uh, with some turnbuckle, again with a Nishi high. Putting in two new doors in lieu of the existing hollow metal doors, there'll be, um, uh, of, of storefront, existing windows to remain. And it goes from lot line to lot line, so there's a parking lot back there. And there's not much on landscaping, cause we're right on the property line, keeping the existing footprint of the building, just dressing it up and trying to get a new tenant in there. The tenant's already existing, so she's coming along.
Very good. Does anybody have any questions?
I will make a motion.
Lovely.
Uh, that. We approve. The. P S P oh, eight, dash, two, three. For three oh, five, five, dash, three oh, six, three, Twelve Mile Road. Because the site materials and architectural as presented meet the standards for site plan approval. Per section one thirty-eight, dash, six, seventy-nine.
Support.
Would you like to call the vote?
I will, Commissioner Hamame?
Yes.
Commissioner Arnsman?
Yes.
Commissioner Woods?
Yes.
Commissioner Bardis?
Yes.
Commissioner Stapp?
Yes.
Chair Kempner?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero?
Okay, thank you. So this is, we can go right into construction documents now? This is not a P U D where there's council, this was it right here?
Alright.
Go right to construction documents. Are you frustrated you sat for so long, you're like, wait, I only took us like two minutes?
Thank you, good night.
Have a good night, thank you. Alright, planning commission, meeting schedule.
So there was just a couple of things I wanted to point out on this, um, one is that. Just as we did this past calendar year, the March meeting has been moved because of school spring break, that's mostly because I'm not available, but I'm assuming some of you are not available too. Um, so that one is moved and then I did wanna know. If the, um, Tuesday after Memorial Day or the Tuesday before Thanksgiving would be a problem, I know that's kind of far in advance. But if the commission chooses, we could change that to the third week instead of the fourth. And, and I do need a motion.
I'm easy.
Should be fine. So, yeah, mo-. Motion to, motion to approve the planning commission meeting dates for twenty twenty-four.
I'll, I'll second.
We can just all, all in favor of this?
Yeah, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, we got our meeting schedule. And committee liaisons.
So you guys have been working on dwindling this list down over the past three meetings. Um, what we have left is Chamber, who I've said a couple of times, I'll say again, they really want someone. Um, environmental committee. Which I know Commissioner Dolan had taken in the past, they have changed their meeting days to Tuesdays, she said that hadn't worked for her at the previous meeting. And then if anyone's interested in being a liaison to the zoning board of appeals, that's available too.
Yeah, I'll do the Z B A.
Okay.
I honestly, I have a meeting for my communities every single Monday, except the fifth Monday of every month. I have meetings the third Tuesday of every month. And on Thursdays, I'm on, I'm as needed for multiple communities for P C Z B A. Which is why I cannot, uh, any of those listed are on days that I'm not available.
Okay.
Yeah, Tu- Tuesday nights are not good, um, and I would be willing to switch, I believe is it the D D A's Wednesday mornings?
Mornings, yes.
Uh, who, I would be able, willing to take that in exchange for one of those, otherwise I, I wouldn't be available.
And that, these don't have to be filled, it's, it's great if they are.
Did you, you said Chamber wants somebody more.
They do.
I mean, I can try and, I, I, but I, I don't feel like. I feel like all of my Tuesdays are taken up, like, all the time, um.
I mean, I could pick one or the other.
Can, can I offer a comment, which you might wanna talk to John Stern about?
Sure.
My communities are shifting away from cross members between Z B A and P C because of conflicts that could arise.
So this person is not a cross member, I know what you're talking about, how some communities do that, this person is really just. Um, like how Councilmember Patterson usually comes here, he really just reports out on the activities of the opposing.
So literally just sitting there, listening.
Yeah, Chamber I would, I, I think would be more interactive, but yes. Not a voting member.
Okay, then I retract my comment.
I can do Chamber instead, I just didn't want, it seems like it's more needed.
It would be more needed, I think. Thanks, Tom.
I mean, cause if worse comes to worse, Kristin can always tell us what happened at Z B As.
And we have not had a Z B A liaison for several years now, and yes, I can fill you in.
And when is he, when is he being?
That's Monday.
It's Mondays, it's the first Monday of every month, there's a couple Tuesdays in there, they meet like six-ish times a year. But I, I'd be happy to fill you in, I attend those meetings anyways.
Oh, you go in.
Although I watch it every week, it could tell you what happened.
And if we have a vacancy for environmental, then we have a vacancy for environmental.
And that's the one on Tues, the third Tuesday, I think, yeah.
Yeah, it's the same time.
It's the week before, yeah.
Eric, do you feel like you wanna take on a liaison or no? I feel like, I feel like you're like off on the side, I keep having to go like.
Still new, give him some time.
I'm just extending it, I don't want him to feel like he's neglected, like, there, I don't want him to feel like he's off in the corner. You don't have to, just saying like, if you want to.
Maybe not today.
Okay.
Let me check my schedule though.
Sure thing.
I didn't see the, the stuff.
I have a subscription.
Does the commission want me to continue putting this on here or we're gonna leave a vacancy on environmental right now and on Z B A?
Well, you'd indicated that Commissioner Da- Dahl.
Dolan.
Dolan had, might be able to cover one.
She's expressed interest in environmental and was that liaison in the past, I didn't think she was available on Tuesdays, cause they used to meet on Thursdays. We could, I could check with her, just.
So just, or you keep it on and.
Yeah, I can keep it on.
And that will give Eric time to think about.
Sure, I can keep it on, just as an open item.
At least one more, one more month.
One more month.
One more month, that sounds lovely. Um, alright, liaison reports, do we have any liaison reports right now?
No, we don't have any lia- no.
Council met twice. Do you want me to?
Is there anything important that we should know?
I know.
They did a first reading of. Outdoor seating, um. To be incorporated into the zoning ordinance at the last meeting on October sixteenth, um. First reading to amend, uh, building regulations regarding inspections and permits. Holiday parade is, and tree lines can be December second. Anyone wants to attend that? Uh, they approved. Hublin Ross proposal for G I S tech support. And then on October second, they met as well.
Only, I, if you feel like it's something important for us to know, then like, then let us know, otherwise you could be like, meh.
No, 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 we're good with the last one on the sixteen.
Um, I did not make the D D A last meeting because I was too busy making Halloween. Um, however, I did just get an update that it looks like, uh, on Wednesday, they should be starting the crosswalk enhancement. In construction on Coolidge. So, uh, I don't know what that means for my Monster Mash, but I'm excited to see about the crosswalks.
Where's Monster Mash again?
It's on Coolidge from Catalpa to Twelve Mile.
Okay.
And then there'll be trick or treating throughout the whole downtown from twelve to three, and then the Monster Mash is from two to five.
What's the, it's like the entire stretch of Twelve Mile downtown?
So, the Twelve Mile will not be closed, they'll just allow, be allowed to trick or treat, this year we're trying to make it so that like. The north side goes towards Greenfield and the south, so everybody's kinda following the same thing, make it a little easier. And then when you get to Coolidge, it's all closed, so it's a free for all, run however you wanna run. Um, and during the Monster Mash, we'll have a DJ, we have different entities that have games or crafts or prizes for the kids, we have a number of circus acts coming. Um, and bombshell treats.
What date is that?
Saturday. Mm-hmm.
Is that a social district too?
It is not. Um, staff comments?
Just that the zoning ordinance steering committee continues their work, parking was the big talking point at the last one.
I missed that one, I missed that meeting.
Well, there's, the multiple family parking is still an outstanding discussion, so you'll get to add your two cents at the next one. The next one will be landscaping, lighting and signs, if you have any comments, and you're all, have access to the Google Drive, um, let me know.
Perfect, do you have any comments for us?
No.
Uh, any commissioner comments? Alright, then someone needs to give me a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at nine forty-two.
Have you been here the whole meeting or did you sneak in?
Nah, he snuck, he snuck in.
He snuck in and then everyone left, which I'm trying not to say personally.
You snuck in after?